From Kern Government Television, welcome to this week's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting. Originating from the County Administrative Center located at 1115 Truxton Avenue in Bakersfield, California. Grounded in ideas, energy, and innovation, Kern County's vision is to be a driving force for the world's fifth-largest economy. And our mission is to exceed expectations of the communities we serve, changing the way they feel about government, those who manage it, and the services it provides. Today's Kern County Board of Supervisors meeting will convene momentarily.
All right. Hey, Board to reconvene. Good morning and welcome to the July 15 Kern County Board of Supervisors hearing. We'll begin as we always do with roll call. Madam Clerk? Supervisor Peters?
Here.
Supervisor Parlier?
Here.
Supervisor Flores? Supervisor Couch?
Here.
Supervisor Perez?
Here. Our flag salute this morning be led by Mr. Jonathan Bong. As you see, he makes his way forward. He is a proud U.S. Navy veteran. He served for 14 years as a yeoman, first-class submarines, rising to the role of administrative officer and later flagrider for the Commander Submarine Force Pacific Fleet. Today, he is a case manager and employment specialist with Vocational Rehabilitation Specialists, Inc., where he helps veterans secure meaningful employment, navigate training programs, and access supportive services. Jonathan is the father of two energetic boys, Lucas and Grayson. He also holds a bachelor's of business administration with a focus on human resources and is finishing advanced coursework in strategic management and marketing. Jonathan is also the founder of LNG Strategies, a consulting firm that specializes in helping small businesses get a foothold. Whether on the field, in the office, or in the community, he brings energy, accountability, and heart to everything that he does. Thank you, sir, for all that you have done and all that you continue to do. I would ask that we please stand for the salute and also please remain standing for a moment of prayer, silence, or meditation, whichever you prefer. Thank you.
Salute. Pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you. And thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Okay, we will move to the pet of the week, Mr. Nick Cullen. Everybody is on pins and needles to see who you brought. Look at that precious baby. Okay, who do you have, Nick?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. I have with me Natasha. Don't you growl.
Don't.
I swear. I swear she's a sweet dog. Natasha's a staff favorite. She's been with us for over a month. She's a little bossy when it comes to other dogs, but she's a good dog. She's available for adoption right now at the Kern County Animal Shelter.
And what would adoption cost?
She has been with us for over 30 days, so her adoption fee is free.
Free?
Every dog that's been in the shelter over 30 days is a fee waived adoption.
My goodness. And is spay and neuter covered in that?
She's already spayed. She's already vaccinated. She's going to be ready for her next home and a responsible pet.
Ready to go?
Absolutely.
Practically giving it a -- practically paying somebody to take?
And she will pay in dividends.
Yes, she will. And patriotic, too. I appreciate that. Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, we're going to move to the consent agenda. Consent matters are considered routine and non-controversial by staff, and so we handle them all at once. But if a member of the public feels otherwise, wants to add input, ask questions, now would be the time to do so. We have agendas at the back of the room in the table. Are we going to display the QR code, Kathy?
Uh, no, we're not.
Okay. So agendas are in the back of the room if you want to follow along. Consent matters begin on page two, and they include items one through two, as well as four through five and eight. On page three, items nine and 11 through 15. On page four, all items listed, 16 through 22. On page five, all items listed, 23 through 29. On page six, all items listed, 30 through 36. On page seven, all items listed, 37 through 44. On page eight, 45 through 47, and 49 through 52. That's it. Kathy, correct?
Yes, and I'm sorry, I was busy with the microphones. You did read the correction into the record regarding item number 10?
Let me see.
Oh, no, I'm sorry, not item number 10. It was item number 11, under Behavioral Health and Recovery Services.
Okay, got it. And this is reading correction to recommended action, to adopt the resolution, so proposed resolution authorizing Behavioral Health and Recovery Services to execute an additional 30-day involuntary psychiatric hold as allowed under Welfare and Institutions Code 5270.10. And approve and adopt resolution. Is that the change?
Yes, we had to add adopt resolution as part of the recommended action on the agenda.
Okay, excellent. So on that page, three was nine and 11 through 15. On page four again, all items listed. Page five, all items listed. Page six, all items listed. Seven, all items listed. I already stated them for the record. On page eight, 45 through 47, as well as 49 through 52. And that's it. That brings us to the end of our consent agenda. If there are any members of the public who would like to weigh in on the consent calendar, now would be the time to do so. Okay, seeing no interest, I'll return to the board for a comment, question, or action.
Madam Chair, I had a question.
Supervisor Peters, I just saw you punched in. My apologies.
No problem. Thank you.
Yes.
So I was looking through this, and a month or two ago, I made a recommendation that we maybe kind of have somebody come, a third set of eyes, look at our budget, and kind of make sure that we're doing things as efficiently as possible, and then looking through this. But, excuse me, the agenda, I've -- one of these items popped out to me, and that's item number 31, and that's a two-year lease, or excuse me, a 48-month lease for a letter opener for $8,900. And if you pull up Google, the very first item that pops up for that same letter opener is for sale for $2,000 less, brand new. There's other letter openers out there that do even more stuff that's even cheaper than that brand. So I'm not going to ask us to be polled or vote against it, just because I want to make sure that I'm not interrupting what they need to do. And I know that departments are running on a timeline often when they have these items on the agenda, but I just wanted to point this out as an example of, I mean, that's an easy catch right there off the get-go, just scrolling through the agenda where we could save $2,000. And just, and I know that Supervisor Couch and Supervisor Perez are considering the budget stuff in their finance committee, but I just wanted to point that out and ask that we give that some serious consideration.
Supervisor Peters, thank you. Do we have any response from staff now? Doesn't sound like it. Okay. And Peters, you were not pulling that matter either, but thank you. Thank you very much for that work you did on that matter. Any other comments, questions on consent? Okay, then we'll move to action.
Well, I'll make a motion on consent, but I'll ask, do we -- why don't we pull it? And ask for an explanation? It's a, it's a, it's not a lot of, a great deal of money, but percentage-wise, it's a big difference. Is there anybody here that could answer that?
Supervisor Couch, through the chair. This is a human services item, so I see the department head coming down to perhaps answer some questions regarding it.
Very good. For the public, you saw a second supervisor has weighed in and asked for more clarification, so now we have an opportunity briefly to address that issue during consent.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Supervisor Peters, through the chair. This agreement has to do with a letter opener from Pitney Bowes in that amount not to exceed $8,928. As you know, the department has a lot of mail that runs through. We operate, we have well in excess of 15,000 CalWorks cases, 200,000 Medi-Cal cases, another close to 200,000 food stamp cases. A lot of mail gets interchanged between clients and us. They respond back and forth, so this letter opener is for that purpose. In particular, versus paying a lot of the, if you buy a letter opener, for example, one time and not lease it out, there's a lot of repairs that go along with that that typically has to be absorbed by the department. So in this particular instance, leasing it out for this amount of terms works out for us in terms of the maintenance of the actual product.
I had a feeling it had something to do with maintenance, and that's what I wanted somebody to answer. Thank you.
We've looked at the back and forth of what's more cost-effective, but the maintenance is what really kills us. Similarly, our copiers, in the same way, we lease our copiers versus pay it outright.
Lito, thank you. I appreciate your clarification. Any other questions, gentlemen?
No, I'll make a motion on consent.
Okay, thank you. Couch, you have a motion?
Second.
And a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four eyes, one absent. Supervisor Flores.
Okay, moving along to resolutions and proclamations. Item number three is to proclaim July 20 through 26 as probation services week in Kern County. And Supervisor Couch will make this presentation.
Motion on the proclamation. Second.
You have a motion, a second, please cast your votes.
The motion is approved. Four eyes, one absent. Supervisor Flores.
So, some people make mistakes, and they have a negative impact on their own life and on our community, and those people get to engage with the probation department. And sometimes, they've made a lot of mistakes, and sometimes the probation department is maybe their last chance at straightening things out and having a good life. Accountability and opportunity is what the probation department provides for people that are in trouble, that have gotten themselves in trouble, made some bad decisions. And we honor those people today, so we have a proclamation for that. I'll read that into the record, then I'll turn it over to Chief Dickinson to make a few comments, however he would like. So the proclamation reads, "The Board of Supervisors, County of Kern State of California, has officially proclaimed July 20 through 26, 2025, as probation services week in Kern County. This recognition has been entered in the official board minutes, signed by our honorable chair, Tisha Perez." Chief, present that to you and let you say whatever you'd like, within reason.
Within reason. Well, thank you Supervisor Couch, and thank you, Madam Chair, members of the board. First thing I'm going to do when I leave this meeting is send a text message to former Chief TR Miracle and let him know that Supervisor Couch said accountability and opportunity without prompting.
Yes, he did. I noticed that, too. That was cool.
Yeah, it's very good. Well, on behalf of my staff, this recognition is very much appreciated. And truly, what makes it even more meaningful is the interest that you as a board and each of you individually have shown in our work. So I really want to thank you for being a partner with us in public safety and in probation work specifically. I know it's not the same everywhere, so I really appreciate it, and so do my staff. Probation's footprint and impact on the criminal justice system has continued to grow throughout the years, mostly due to a multitude of new state mandates and realignment efforts that have shifted services from state responsibility to the counties. We remain strong in our traditional roles. These include the supervision of adults and youth on probation, operating secure youth facilities, and providing complex dispositional and sentencing reports to the courts. Our role as sentencing law experts, our presence in the courtrooms, and the crafting of thousands of reports for the court's consideration brings tremendous value to the judicial system. Our youth services officers are tasked with maintaining safe and secure facilities where youth are held accountable, and at the same time, they provide an environment where pro-social behavior is rewarded with opportunities to grow and improve. I know there's some that you're very familiar with, Supervisor Perez.
I am.
And we supervise adult offenders on felony probation, mandatory supervision, and with AB 109, we have supervision responsibilities for over half of the population of people being released from state prison back to the county. With SBA 23 DJJ realignment, we are responsible for the custody and supervision of all youth whose cases remain under juvenile court jurisdiction, which can last up to age 25 in some instances. Through a California Supreme Court case and a subsequent legislation, we are responsible for adult pre-trial assessments and monitoring of certain individuals pending the resolution of their criminal cases. Our program specialists provide evidence-based services and programs for adults and youth whose assessments and case plan have identified specific areas of need. And amidst all the growth and changes, what has remained constant is the high level of dedication, work ethic, and passion the men and women of the probation department bring to their jobs each day. And by embracing the values of accountability and opportunity, they make a positive impact on people's lives and provide for a safer community. You know, we believe we must hold people accountable when they misstep or fail to adhere to the court orders of the law. In this calendar year alone, our officers have seized 26 firearms and made drug seizures on 145 separate instances. But we also must provide opportunities for people to change their thinking patterns and behaviors, to turn their lives around through the development of case plans, referrals to services and supervision of progress made. Again, in 2025 alone, we have celebrated dozens of youth and adults who have completed programs we offer, including several youth who have been able to graduate high school while in our care. We do this with the understanding that almost everyone we work with, almost everyone we work with, remains in our community or will be released back to our community at some point. So we are committed to doing all we can to ensure they are ready to be productive and law-abiding members of society. Every day, my staff deal with some of the most challenging people in our county, in courtrooms, in classrooms, in our youth facilities, and in environments that are often dangerous and unpredictable. When I look at the landscape of this department and all that my staff do, I'm humbled to get the privilege of representing the work of the men and women of the probation department. And of course, all the work I mentioned is supported by fantastic staff from our HR team, our fiscal team, our support services team, and our IT team. So I want to thank you again for this proclamation, and if my staff would, I'd like them to stand up and be recognized.
Bill, I'd like to say a few things about your probation department.
Yes, ma'am.
Because I've been involved with them for a long time, from my time as public defender, and have been observing that body, and have sent endless amount of clients, family members, literally, through this, through this department. And it is unrecognizable from what it was when I started 15 years ago, observing the probation department. Always a big job, always a tough job. TR was absolutely masterful. I really appreciate Supervisor Couch's, you know, reference to what was a transitioning philosophy for probation. But I have to acknowledge, the team that you have now has really elevated what you do there on a, on a level never before seen here or anywhere else in the state. And we are offering the most cutting-edge, the most forward-thinking, but responsible opportunities for growth between our officers and our probationers and the community as a whole. You have invited in the Arts Council, Kern Health Systems, to come in and be part of the holistic rehabilitation of our neighbors, the holistic rehabilitation. And it is absolutely stunning. I see opportunity and accountability, but I also see compassion. I also see love, and I see a change in happening that is very, very encouraging. We are getting, moving forward to launch with probation, a life coaching project that's very exciting next year, where we will take these young people who have been mired in this system and coach them to address issues of trauma, issues of substance abuse, psychiatric issues, all of it. And of course, help people become productive and get them into employment. So I want you to know, you have the best probation department in the state. You have the best probation department, as I have observed it, and I am so proud of what you're doing and so grateful, Bill. Please keep up the good work. Thank you Supervisor Couch for your excellent presentation. You know, I tip my hat to you, sir.
Thank you. Appreciate that, ma'am.
Thank you. The next portion. The next portion of the agenda is public presentations. This is reserved for members of the public who would like to address this board on matters that are within our jurisdiction but are not on today's specific agenda. So if you have a matter that you would like to speak on, now would be the time to do so. We ask you to please respect the two-minute limit, and I will refer up to the clock to try to keep us moving. So thank you. Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning. Andy Hensel. The Department of Justice issued, filed a statement of interest with Judicial Watch's lawsuit that calls on Oregon State Secretary of State to make a reasonable effort to remove registrants from the, from the registrants of ineligible registrants from the voter rolls as required by federal law. The National Voter Registration Act, NVRA, requires states to conduct a general program that makes a reasonable effort to remove from the official voter rolls the names of ineligible voters who have died or changed residents. The law requires registrations to be canceled when voters fail to respond to address confirmation notices and then fail to vote in the next two general elections. The just, in the Justice Department press release, Assistant Attorney Harmatt Dillon said, "Accurate voter registration rules are critical to ensure that elections are conducted fairly, accurately, and without fraud." States, states have specific requirements. In May 2024, Judicial Watch sued California to clean up its voter rolls. The lawsuit filed on behalf of Judicial Watch and the Libertarian Party also asked the court to compel California to make a reasonable effort to remove ineligible registrants from the voter rolls as required by federal law. Concerned citizens request the ROV post-monthly removal numbers on its website reporting. Concerned citizen also asked for complete voter registration data to be released to qualified individuals for review, including the names of all voter categories such as active, inactive, and canceled voters. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning, Jess.
Good morning, Board, Chair. Y'all have a good day, I hope. So Judicial Watch has filed lawsuits to force California to clean up their voter rolls. The lawsuit filed on behalf of the Judicial Watch and the Libertarian Party of California asked the courts to compel them to make a responsible effort to remove registrants, ineligible registrants from the voter rolls as required by federal law. In 2018, this Supreme Court confirmed such removals are mandatory. Judicial Watch filed the latest lawsuit after uncovering a broad failure of the cleanup of the voter rolls in dozens of counties of California, Kern County being one of them. Twenty-one counties reported a combined total of 11 removals under Section 8D1B during this two-year reporting period. That's kind of pathetic, by the way, 11. The complaint notes that these 21 counties, including Kern County, contain 22% of the population of California. The Judicial Watch lawsuit also points out that another 16 California counties, including Kern again, could not even tell how many registers were removed pursuant to the NVRA. Dirty voter rolls can mean dirty elections. California voting rolls continue to be a mess, said Judicial Watch President Tom Pitten. Judicial Watch litigation already caused the state to remove 1 million outdated names from the rolls in California, but the new lawsuit shows that there's more work to be done. One million can swing a whole big bunch of votes, turnout. Concerned citizens request a monthly report on election's website for the removals due to the change of address and death of records. We would also like it to be noted that some of the stuff, some of these removals, the ones that have been removed, we can't get record of. And we know that they're still on the records, they just don't let us have them. Thank you.
Jess, thank you. Morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board. This is a continuation. I'm Ron Barger.
Hi, Ron.
By the way.
Good morning, Ron.
The United States respectfully submits this statement of interest pursuant to 28 USC 517, which authorizes the Attorney General to attend to the interests of the United States in a suit pending in a court of the United States. This case presents important questions regarding enforcement of the National Voter Registration Act 52 USC 20501-11. Congress has vested the Attorney General with authority to enforce the NVRA on behalf of the United States, C 52 USC 20510A. The complaint alleged the defendants failed to conduct a general program that makes a reasonable effort to cancel the registrations of Illinois voters who has become ineligible by reason of a change of residence as required under Section 8A4 of the NVRA. And to make available all records concerning the implementation of programs and activities conducted for the purpose of ensuring the accuracy and currency of the official lists of the eligible voters as required under the Section 8I ID at 20507I. Thank you.
Thank you. Morning.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Parris, you and your family. Good morning, Board members. My name is Charles Shin. I am a retired Marine and a concerned citizen. God bless America. On September 1st, 2023, defendants responded that the board, the state board, quote, "does not have access to local election authorities, list maintenance records, and that any request for more information regarding specific jurisdictions, list maintenance activities, and/or EVAZ survey statistics should be made directly to the local election authority," unquote. Defendants also stated that, quote, "local election, local election authorities," not "the state board of elections," "maintain lists of all voters to whom a forwardable confirmation of address notice has been sent," unquote. General requirements are discussed in Section 8A as relevant to the instant matter. Section 8A4 requires each state to conduct a general program that makes a reasonable effort to remove the names of ineligible voters from official lists of eligible voters by reason of the death of the registrant or a change in the residence of the registrant in accordance with subsections B, C, and D. Section 20507A, 4A and B. Sections 8, B, and C set forth obligations for confirming voter registration and establishing voter removal programs as part of a state's, quote, "program or activity to protect the integrity of the electoral process by ensuring the maintenance of an accurate and current voter registration roll for elections for federal office," unquote. State voter list maintenance programs must be, quote, "uniform, non-discriminatory, and in compliance with the Voting Rights Act of 1965, 42 USC 1973," also 52 USC Section 20507B and 1. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Shin. Morning.
Dennis McLean. Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors, and staff. Thank you for allowing me to speak. NV, NVRA specifically provides each state shall maintain for at least two years and shall make available for public inspection all records concerning the implementation of programs and activities conducted for the purpose of ensuring the accuracy and currency of official lists of eligible voters' ID. The maintenance and accuracy and up-to-date voter registration list is the hallmark of a national system seeking to prevent voter fraud. The Eighth Circuit in Missouri explained how interaction by local election agencies may lead to an NVAR violation. After determining that, under NVARA plain language, Missouri may not delegate the responsibility to conduct a general program to a local official and thereby avoid responsibility if such a program is not reasonably conducted. The Eighth Circuit found the lack of compliance, the NVARA, by local election agencies was relevant to determining whether or not Missouri is reasonably conducting a general program. Concerned citizen urges the board to request the Election Department to post monthly updates on removals to their public website. Removals have moved out of the country, county, or by death is to be maintained monthly and not dependent on a two-year cycle. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dennis. Good morning, and welcome.
Good morning. Latisha, I love you and every person in your family, and that includes Fer.
Thank you. I love you.
Welcome. Thank you, Board, for letting me speak today. My name is Pamela Reese, R-E-E-C-E. Before I begin, I would like to offer my bid as a letter opener, and I would do it for four grand and no maintenance. And if you need a stapler, I can do that, too. I hope this was the time and the place to let you know that.
Submit your application formally.
Thank you. I shall. Maintenance is extra. But my God, eight grand for a letter opener? Well, I come as a concerned countryman. Myself and my neighbors, we all share the same thoughts and views and whatnot, but my friends here have already said everything that I oddly was going to say, too. But I did have an idea. Instead of counting votes, why not weigh them? Would that not be interesting and effective? Yes, think about it. Anywho, in Harkless, the Sixth Circuit, 2008, it held that each state must designate voter registration agencies and ensure they complete the required tasks pursuant to Section 7 of the NVRA. Well, over the course of the statutory history that led to the NVRA, the list maintenance required, requirements evolved from requiring states to simply establish a uniform and non-discriminatory program to ensure that official voter registration lists are accurate and current. Accurate and current, the way things used to be. It's gone from that to requiring that states conduct a general program that makes a reasonable effort to remove some ineligible voters. That's kind of wishy-washy, watered down, and pathetic, the verbiage. Compare the NVRA of 1989 to the NVRA of 1993. But that speaks volumes. Let's see here. Every year, throughout the year, our Elections Division should be removing voters, ineligible voters, and it should be a good goal, an attainable goal to do. I think our Elections Office should be jumping. We should be locked and loaded and ready for anything. We need to have some goals and present the public with those attained goals and the results, prove the results achieved, if any. And I'll make this short and sweet. Thank you very much for your time and everything you do.
Thank you, Pam. Any other public comments at this time? Okay. Seeing none, we're going to move to Board Member announcements and reports. Supervisor Peters, who you punched in now, was that from earlier? Okay, my apologies. Any announcements, Couch? Nothing? Okay. We're going to move right along to item number 10, which is a proposed Amendment Number 5 to Agreement 101, 2016 with Dominion Voting System E, providing democracy, sweet voting system, to extend the term from December 31, 2025 through December 31, 2027. We have had a lengthy and extensive discussion of these issues over some time. We're going to get into some of that today. I want to, before we start, thank, thank you, Amy, so much for your hard work, everything you have done to get us to this point, and I want to thank our concerned citizens for not letting off the gas and for being very assertive and aggressive in pursuing these matters. I think it has produced very good outcomes, and we're going to explore some of them today. But really sincerely, and to Supervisor Couch, thank you. Amy, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good morning, Chair Perez and members of the board.
Oh, can't hear you.
Good morning, member, good morning, Chair Perez and members of the board. Amy Espinoza, Kern County Auditor Controller, County Clerk, Registrar of Voters. On February 28th, 2023, your board approved extending the county's contract with Dominion Voting Systems for three years through December 31st, 2025. As part of that request, I committed to conducting a request for proposal, or RFP, in 2025 to evaluate which of the three systems currently certified for use in California would best serve Kern County voters. In January 2025, your board approved the idea of requesting the state allow Kern County to remove the registrar of voter responsibilities from the auditor controller county clerk and allow for a board-appointed registrar of voters to run elections. Legislation is currently in Sacramento, awaiting consideration. Due to this change in direction, I made a proposal to the Finance and Administration Committee of the Board of Supervisors to gain input from both Chair Perez and Supervisor Couch, as well as the concerned citizens who frequently express their concerns to your board regarding Kern County elections. First and foremost, I want to remind your board that state law mandates that the county cannot purchase or contract for a voting system unless it has been certified by the Secretary of State of California. In addition, the county cannot terminate our current contract until a new contract is executed. Keeping this in mind, I provided two options to the Finance and Administration Committee for consideration and input. Option one was to go to RFP now. This would, may result in all of our voting system software and hardware being replaced. The timeline is very tight as we are heading into the June 2026 election season, earlier than, than most people think. That happens in December is when we start that season, so we would have to be through this by the end of November 2025. And that fiscal impact is an estimated range of $2 to $4 million, again, depending on the system and what we actually have to replace. It's not just the, the software, it's not just a server, it is all of our voting machines, it is all of our counting machines, it is all of our adjudication stations. So there's a lot that actually goes into it. The second option was to push the RFP process out to 2027 and extend our current contract through December 31st, 2027. This would allow your newly appointed registrar of voters to conduct the RFP upon appointment. The timeline proposed was bringing an amendment to our current contract for your board's approval, and the fiscal impact is $583,812. Of this, $468,812 is for the two-year extension of our current licenses and maintenance. The remaining $115,000 is for the one-time upgrade of software and minimal hardware I am pleased to bring before your full board this morning what I consider to be a joint recommendation of myself, Chair Perez, Supervisor Couch, and our concerned citizens, which is to extend our current contract so that the newly anticipated registrar of voters can play an active role in selecting Kern County's voting system. can play an active role in selecting Kern County's voting system. Therefore, it is recommended that your Board approve the proposed Amendment Number 5 to Agreement 101-2016 with Dominion Voting Systems to extend the term from December 31, 2025 through December 31, 2027, and approve the upgrade to the voting system to the most current certified version for a total not to exceed the amount of $583,812, and authorize the Chair to sign. And this concludes my presentation.
Amy, thank you for a succinct but thorough presentation. I don't think it could have been anywhere near the succinct without the work that has been done extensively over the period of more than a year, and I would ask my partner in that process, Supervisor Couch, to weigh in and just give the public some sense of what we have been doing as a team, county staff, of course, doing a huge lift, Amy, and of course, our concerned citizens who have been driving this conversation for some time. Supervisor Couch, I'd love your thoughts.
Well, I kind of want to start by thanking our front row folks. Really, because for the way we, the committee meeting that we had, I can't remember if you were there or if it was...
Laura presented.
Laura was there, okay. But it was pretty collaborative, and it's not, some people, I think, get the impression that this is an adversarial relationship that we have, but it's really not. And I would ask Amy if you could go into, just maybe another minute or so. The thing that struck me about it, that I think maybe struck both me and the Chair, was how much we're going to have to pay right now just to do this, how much we would have to pay if we went through the whole RFP, and we really took a look at that in light of our recent budget discussions, at least I think we did. And also layer into that the fact that we've, you know, we've got legislation pending that will allow us to separate out the registrar of voters function. We ask a lot of you to handle the auditor controller function, the auditor function, the controller function, and the registrar of voters. That is almost an impossible task to do all three of those functions, and so that's, the legislation is pending that will allow us to, I think, for the Board to appoint someone that will focus specifically on the Elections Division, which will now become, I guess, the Elections Department one day in the future. So could you sort of amplify the costs that we looked at, kind of in those two or three different categories of now, later, and maybe even much later?
Sure. So first, I want to start with the extending the contract. The cost of that is regardless, so the $468,000, that's regardless of whether we stay on our current system or we move to a new one. We have to have a system in place. So that money's spent regardless of whether we go out to RFP or not. The one-time upgrade of software and minimal hardware, that is a server that would need to be upgraded, along with the software of the voting system and adjudication stations. And so there were three tiers that we took, and this was the leanest, for sure, to get us through 2027. In 2027, an RFP would be conducted, and that process, out of that process, a recommendation brought to your Board, which may or may not be our current system, it may be one of the other two systems. I can tell you that over 30 California counties and the majority of the top 15 counties, they do use Dominion. But as I've mentioned before, it is good practice to go out to the market, well, our market of three vendors, to see if they've upped their game since the last time we actually looked at their systems and really evaluate whether or not there's one of those other systems would better serve Kern County. Going to a new system, as I mentioned earlier, there's a lot of parts of a system, so that $2 to $4 million estimate is replacing everything if we go out to RFP. Now, we may or may not have to replace all of that if the RFP and your Board approved another contract with Dominion, if that was the outcome of the RFP in a couple of years. Or there could, you know, we could maybe utilize some of our existing equipment with the new software, with the upgrade, but there's no guarantee. I can't say what's going to happen in two years. So that's really the difference. I hope I answered your question.
Yeah, and I'm going to say something else, and it's not going to, I'm not going to say it very well, but it's, I take it in the spirit in which I intended. We also, I think, thought that if we hire a new registrar of voters and let's allow that person the opportunity to dig into this and make their own recommendation to the Board of Supervisors instead of us making a big investment today, and then whenever they start, they might come to us and say, you know, I wish you guys hadn't done that. So I didn't really think through how I was going to say that, but I think you got the point. Anyway, I appreciated, you did a lot of work, and I appreciated your work, your staff's work, and your staff's work to sit there with us and go through the details, because on this deal, the details were very important. And thank you all, you first row guys and gal. You need some friends there on the end. You need a couple of gal friends to show you. Anyway, those are my thoughts, and I appreciate that. Thank you.
And then if I may, I just, I know I've told both you, Supervisor Couch, and Chair Perez when we met, and I also met with Supervisor Flores, and I told you, I want to work with you in this process. I do, Kern County has grown, our registered voters has grown. The complexity of what the state is requiring us to do in elections is massive. Every year, there's new changes to law, and it is a lot to cover multiple areas. And luckily, I have staff who assist and keep me abreast of things, but I do believe that Kern County will be best served with someone who can completely focus on elections. And so I recognize that, and I do want to work with your Board to help that transition any way that I can. And so I just, I've said it to you in your offices, and I just wanted to say it here publicly also.
Could I, one more thing, Chair, if you don't mind. Could you give us an idea, would you start the RFP process, whatever that takes, initiating it, in the end of 2026? Or would you wait till, how long will it take? When do you think you'll start it? When do you think it'll conclude?
So if the new registrar were to be the one to facilitate that, it would be when they officially took office, which would be the beginning in January 2027. And hopefully, we don't have, kind of like last year with all these special elections, especially when we have a large amount of the county, that's a significant election. That person would be available to start that process, and my current staff has already reached out to some other counties who've recently gone out to RFP. So we do have some resources for that new person to start looking at upon appointment. And then we also have resources, whether it's through the County Administrative Office or myself and our existing staff, to assist in writing an RFP that will fulfill Kern County's needs. Again, we only have three vendors, and they pretty much are all selling the same thing, but there may be nuances in the way they do things that would better serve us.
Excellent.
Well, I want to, again, really thank the front row for your diligence and persistence in this matter. When we first started, as you remember, it was not all lovey-dovey like it is today, not even close, if you recall. And for very good reason, there was a lot of fear, there was fear from me, I'll just be honest, I can only speak for myself, lack of trust, and really just unawareness of how so many members of the public really feel about these matters. And it was only, it took a kind of devotion, almost obsessive devotion, to not backing off, Shin, and to figuring out new and creative ways to package your message, just extraordinary. Nobody in the state of California is doing this, and I'm sure there are people just like you in every single county, but for whatever reason, they are not moving forward in the way that we are, and I think really deserves remarkable consideration and praise, because, again, it did not start out this way. We did not like each other. We're still getting to know each other, but I'll be honest, I have fallen for every one of you pretty hard, because I see your heart, who you are, what you have contributed to this community, this country is so extraordinary. And we're proving here how we can work through issues, how we can address. The original idea of splitting that office was, for so many people in my world, it sent them into a panic, consumed by fear and lack of trust and really ignorance about a whole lot of things. And yet, here we are today with Amy saying this was the right way to move, with Supervisor Couch, myself, as co-chairing, really just being the apparatus for concerned citizens in this community, and it really is the best of us. And I want you to know how grateful I am, how much I appreciate this opportunity, I absolutely cherish it, to learn from you. I think it's precious, and it is the best of us, what we can achieve together. Still issues, many, many issues, there will always be issues, and there will always be tensions, but we have demonstrated here today how to do it right and how to make sure that the public feels listened to and a part of the process. Thank you so much to the staff for caring and for all the work that you've done. I know it's been a lot, and look at the outcome here today, it's absolutely worth it, it is absolutely righteous. So thank you, Supervisor Couch, you've led that committee, and you have been absolutely phenomenal. You're stunning, you're brilliant, you know how I feel about your skills and abilities, and they're really demonstrated in full force today. So thank you, thank you, Amy. What remains to be done at this point?
Just flag the tape so I can use that later.
Ah, there we go. And it's the truth, it's all the truth. Okay, so have we received public input? Okay, so on this matter, we would like to open for public input this opportunity for you to come down and tell us what you think about what you've heard today. We have gone through the painstaking process of beginning to separate these offices, we can have laser focus on our roles and improve and increase the public's trust in this process, and also fix it, fix a bunch of things that need to be fixed. So thank you, and Ron, it's good to see you again, and I'm shocked you're up here to talk about this.
Well, on 6/3, I presented the Executive Order 13873, which President Trump put a time date on it, which I would like for you all to look into, because they gave him 180 days to review and rescind certifications. National security findings due by September 2025 will likely name specific systems and vendors unacceptable, triggering rapid bans or removals before 2026. So if you decide to get a new machine or the machines that we're using, they may be banned, so I don't know if we want to waste any more money on it. Okay? And if you can read that executive order again, it will explain all of what he's planning on doing, and I don't know if California will do it or not, but we could have an uncertified election if we do it the wrong way. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron.
Can I comment on that really quickly?
Oh, please.
Sorry. I just want to point out that regardless of whether we move forward with Dominion or we were to do an RFP and go to a new system, there's no guarantee what would happen with that new system. So right now, we really are in limbo, and whether or not the President's orders actually trickle all the way down has yet to be seen.
Okay.
Good morning, again, Jesse Sanders. I wanted to address his first statement on our flyer here, it says, "California Elections Code 19202 states a jurisdiction shall not purchase a contract or voting system unless it has been previously certified by the Secretary of State." And the second thing is, the California code, she states here, jurisdictions may not terminate a contract till they have one in place. And in the past, when we've asked for this, they always tie your hands by bringing it up, "We need this tomorrow." So we've had three years to certify one or look into one, and they need it tomorrow. So in the, moving here forward, I would hope that you would have the new voter registrar give you something with time to deal with rather than hogtying you at the moment of purchase. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. Thank you. Who else would like to provide input on the matter as presented by Amy Espinoza?
Good morning, Madam Chair and the Board members, Charles Shin. Thank you, Amy, for working with our committee, and we appreciate everything that you've been doing. This process has never been a personal thing, it's been a difference of our perspective and maybe the perspective that has, in our perspective, has come down from the Secretary of State. So I realize that your hands have been tied, and basically, the Board members, you know, were dealing with a system that has come about post-COVID. It really wasn't to a lot of folks' liking in the community, so. And then just, I want to say thank you to the two members of our committee that did a heavy lift and actually asked poignant questions, made the forum welcoming and open to members of the public. We really appreciate that. We also appreciate having met with all but one member of the Board of Supervisors, their time, the personal comments that we've had, the sharing of opinions, thoughts, and ideas, and so, you know, we so much appreciate what the Board has done. So again, thank you, and honestly, when we started this out, Chairwoman, we had an open mind. I don't know what our faces was communicating, but, you know, we were carrying a big, a big, heavy weight, because we had an objective in mind. So we just are very happy, so thank you.
Your devotion is stunning, Shin. Thank you. Morning, again.
Morning. Pamela Reese, R-E-E-C-E. Thank you, everybody, everybody in this courtroom, in these chambers, I'm sorry. I was just thinking earlier, how if I had the guidance when I was in high school about becoming something like y'all, just, I would have just, I would have loved it, and many people would, you know, students, young people. I didn't know this sort of thing existed, people like you all. I didn't even know they existed when I was in high school, so thank God for you, thank you for being you. But, the Secretary of State, everybody I know has a big but. The Secretary of State is not our friend at all, in my opinion. And I wanted to ask Amy, did you say that a certain voting system was approved? Is it the Dominion?
There are three voting systems that have been certified by the state of California, Dominion, ESNS, and the third one's escaping me right now.
Is it Hart?
Hart, yes.
And when you say voting system, what does a voting system consist of?
A server or multiple servers, counting machines, adjudication stations, ballot counting or ballot marking devices. There's other small pieces, but those are the largest pieces of the system.
And what suite of the Dominion was approved or certified? I know that there's a few, Democracy Suite 519, Image Cast 519, Remote Accessible by Mail 510A. Do you know which suite it is?
Um...
I don't mean to...
I believe it's the 519.
519?
And then there's a newer one that's been certified as well.
We can get that to you, Pam.
Okay, okay.
Just, we'll get it more specific.
For sure.
I'll get that from Amy, our office can get that to you.
Great. And P.S., thank you, Amy, for all your work and keeping an open mind with us.
Awesome. Thank you, thank you, Pam, thank you. Any other public comment on the Dominion item? Okay, I'm going to return to the Board for questions and comment. I see Supervisor Peters has plugged in. Floor is yours.
Thank you. And to Ms. Reese, I wanted to say, it's not too late, you'd do a good job up here.
Yeah, no kidding. Peters, I agree. I agree.
Well, so first of all, thank you to Supervisor Couch and Perez and everybody for being part of that committee, getting this info back to us. I did have some questions, though. Amy, you had mentioned, you know, you can't say what's going to happen in two years, and I agree. If we look at the last 10 years, I know Supervisor Couch, you brought up the price of this, and, you know, it is significant. But if we look at the last 10 years, if there are any indication, I think prices are going to keep going up fairly substantially, potentially. You know, last time we were discussing this, we couldn't replace the system because of a mock election was going on, or special elections going on. And who knows what the circumstances are going to be two years from now when we extend it. So government is nothing if not slow. And, you know, we take our time. It takes months and months to go through these RFP processes. And if we're, I guess if we're not going to go through an RFP process, is there a reason we couldn't go through an RFI process or something where we go out and get the information, we do the research, and we spend the months getting that together? So when we do have an ROV that takes office, they have that information ready to go, and we can make a decision a little bit more nimbly than we might be able to if we start that process once they take office.
So as we all know, technology moves quickly. State law moves quickly. Changes in requirements for certified equipment, things like that, move quickly, sometimes year to year. And so doing the legwork now does not necessarily mean that it's going to be valuable when it comes time to RFP. When I mentioned earlier that we are reaching out to other counties who've recently gone to RFP, that's to gain more of a template to use. Now, we're going to have to massage that to get it to what current needs. And if there's any new requirements, we're going to have to make sure that those items are addressed as well. And right now, there is no way to know whether we move forward now or we wait till 2027. I don't know that it is, if it's better to get information that may or may not be outdated now, and using the resources that we have to focus on that instead of other areas that we need right now, or to wait until 2027. I think it's more prudent to wait until 2027, just because for those reasons I mentioned. I appreciate your comments, Supervisor Peters. But just as quickly as we've seen things move over, since I've been here the last couple of years, I'm not confident that what we look at today is actually going to be what we need in two years.
Sure, sure. All right. No, I appreciate that. But, I mean, we have had Dominion for quite a while. And, yeah, I know that things could change, and I appreciate that. I just, I'm not saying it's been purposeful, but situations have arisen that have continued to put this off. And I'm not, I'm not even saying that it's imperative that we switch machines necessarily. It might be. But it is imperative to ensure that we have as much confidence in our elections process as possible. So I want to just make sure that we're doing the legwork, and we have the information to move as nimbly as we can. I think, judging by how long we've had Dominion, that it would at least be a relevant starting point by the time we're ready to make that decision. But you definitely know more about it than I do. But that's my opinion. And if my colleagues have any other thoughts, I'd like to hear. Thanks.
Thank you, Supervisor Peter. Supervisor Parlier.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I echo Phillip's statements. And I really want to give a shout out to you two, David, our chair, Letitia Perez, to our community members, concerned citizens, other stakeholders, and you two, Amy. If you want to talk about democracy, this was democracy in action right here.
Thank you.
And I want to thank you again for the heavy lifting, and really bringing this before us as a cost-saving measure, too. When you look at our budget and the deficit that we face, I mean, we really, wouldn't be prudent for us to go out right now and spend that kind of money when, again, we're going to have a new person coming on fairly soon. So I just want to thank everyone for the hard work. And when you said you couldn't imagine somebody in high school, you know, sitting up here, that goes for me, too. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Supervisor Parlier. Supervisor Couch?
Well, I want to, Phillip, excuse me, Supervisor Peters makes a good point. And I was, it was kind of where I was trying to go, but I didn't, I didn't say it nearly as well as he did. So can we include in part of our motion, or just general direction, we're going to hire someone, and we're going to dump this big project in their lap immediately?
Yeah.
And so, I don't, I don't know the ins and outs of an RFI, and an RFQ, and an RFP, and all that, and what, where it's appropriate and where it isn't. But giving them as much, giving this new person, whoever it is, as much information to kind of hit the ground running so they can make a good decision, and get this process started and completed. I don't know how to do that, but you probably do. So I'm just trying to impress upon you what Peter said. But I think it's a good, it's whatever we have to do to give this person the best opportunity to make the best recommendation to us, we need to keep that in the back of our mind as we move forward.
Here, here. Well said, Supervisor. Is that a motion?
I'll make a motion on staff's recommendation. Yep.
Thank you so much, Supervisor Couch. We have a motion on staff's recommendation? Second? Supervisor Parlier?
Yes, Madam Chair, second.
Thank you. Thank you very much. We have a motion, a second. Please cast your votes on this momentous and legitimately progressive moment. We are making substantial and meaningful progress here.
History.
And it feels really good. So please cast your votes. History, you're right.
The motion is approved. Four ayes, one absent. Supervisor Flores.
All right. Nice work, everybody. Okay, we're going to move on to our remaining item on this morning's agenda, which is item number 48. This is proposed ordinance adding Chapter 9.46 to Title IX of the Kern County Ordinance relating to unlawful possession of a catalytic converter. What an incredible nightmare this issue has been here and everywhere, really. Happy to see formal action being taken today. So Kendra, I understand that you will be presenting this issue for the public?
Yes, our office has a presentation.
Thank you.
Okay. Good morning, Madam Chair, Supervisors. On May 5, 2025, your board requested that county council work with the sheriff's office to draft a catalytic converter ordinance addressing catalytic converter theft in the unincorporated area of the county. Josh Rucknick from our office has been working with the sheriff's office, and will be making a presentation. And he has a PowerPoint for you.
Good morning, Chair and the board. As background, the rise of catalytic converter theft in California, it's, we've seen a significant increase over the years in the U.S., and California is one of the leading states with that. Thieves are motivated by valuable precious metals, such as platinum, palladium, and rhodium contained within the catalytic converters, and that can catch, or fetch, high prices on the black market. A stolen converter can be sold for $50 to $800, while the replacement costs for vehicle owners range from $1,000 to 3,500 or more. The frequency of catalytic converter theft claims in California peaked in 2022, with over 11,900 claims, and has seen a decline since then due to new legislation and increased awareness. In 2024, there were 42 catalytic converters reported stolen in the unincorporated areas of Kern County. Here are some of the state laws that was discussing earlier. The state made some adjustments in their, in their laws. For example, Senate Bill 1087 limits the legal sale of used catalytic converters to authorized parties like licensed auto dismantlers, and repair dealers, and individuals who can prove ownership. This law requires core recyclers to maintain detailed documentation, including the year, make, model, and VIN number for all catalytic converters they purchase, and the name and address of the seller of the catalytic converter. Other state laws, such as SB 55, requires vehicle dealers to engrave the VIN numbers on catalytic converters before a new or used truck can be sold. AB 1519 makes it illegal to remove or alter VIN markings on catalytic converters, and prohibits the possession of three or more converters with altered or removed VIN numbers. SB 986, starting January 1, 2024, as a result of that law, all catalytic converters from vehicles sold in California are required to have serial numbers. So as you can see, most of these laws focus on the recycling companies and the businesses, but not the individual thieves that are actually stealing the catalytic converters. So in Kern County, there aren't no local laws requiring anyone who is not a licensed recycler of catalytic converters to produce the type of ownership documentation when in possession of a catalytic converter that is not attached to a vehicle. And as a result, locating a victim without identifying information on the catalytic converter is often impossible, which makes it difficult for law enforcement to approve the catalytic converter was stolen. Under state law, individuals could go unpunished unless they possessed nine or more catalytic converters, because those state laws apply when you have at least nine catalytic converters that are not attached, without the proof of required ownership and purchase information. Thus, there is a need for a catalytic converter ordinance that focuses on those steps of eight and under. And the basis for any ordinance that we do in the Kern County, just as a reminder, is California Constitution, Article 11, Section 7, which states in relevant part, "A county may make and enforce within its limits all local police, sanitary, and other ordinances and regulations not in conflict with general laws." In our case, the proposed ordinance complements state legislation in the fight against catalytic converter theft. So the proposed ordinance would make it unlawful for any person other than a core recycler, and a core recycler is, is your basic licensed recycling company, scrap metal company, that's what that is, to possess any catalytic converter that is not attached to a vehicle unless the possessor has valid documentation or other written documents clearly identifying the vehicle from which the catalytic converter originated, based on the totality of the circumstances. So you're going to need written proof or legitimate proof that that detached catalytic converter that you're holding, you have permission to own it and have it in your possession. If you don't produce that, then it's a violation of the ordinance. Now, what is some of the valid documentation that's acceptable under the ordinance? It's not limited to, but includes a signed bill of sale from the original owner, authorizing removal of the catalytic converter, including the vehicle owner's name, address, and telephone number, verifiable documentation from an auto body shop proving the owner relinquished the catalytic converter to the auto body shop or similar business, verifiable electronic communication from the previous owner to the possessor relinquishing ownership of the catalytic converter, and vehicle registration associated with the catalytic converter, together with photographs showing an etched associated license plate number, or vehicle identification number, or driver's license number of registered vehicle owner claimed to have conveyed the catalytic converter to the person now in possession. So violations of the proposed ordinance, it's a violation of this proposed ordinance. It may be prosecuted as a misdemeanor, punishable by a fine up to $1,000, or by imprisonment in the county jail for up to one year, or both. We can also issue administrative penalties through citation process. For the first offense, it's $1,000. For the second, it's $2,000. And for the third, it's $5,000, and any subsequent violations from there. In conclusion, the ordinance as proposed will help protect the residents of Kern County, and assist law enforcement by establishing a zero tolerance policy for catalytic converter theft. And we are asking, and we request, that the board move on staff's recommendation. And questions?
Thank you for that excellent presentation. It was easy to follow, and it's a tough, it's a subject that can be difficult to follow and get lost in. So thank you for the presentation. Supervisor Parlier, did you punch in right now?
I did.
Okay, thank you. Would love to hear from you.
Thanks, Josh. So when I was on the Bakersfield City Council, and you were an attorney within the city attorney's office, we worked on a similar ordinance, or tried to get a similar ordinance with the city. I think this adds a much-needed tool to the toolbox for the Sheriff's Department, for our county law enforcement. And I would urge any municipality within the county also to adopt a similar ordinance. And with that, Madam Chair, I make a motion to approve staff recommendation.
Okay. And we have a motion, a second. I still have an opportunity to hear from the public. I'm not sure if our sheriff or somebody from his office is going to weigh in. That's always nice. But this is an opportunity for the public to come forward and give us your thoughts on this proposition. Morning, Jess.
I noticed that there was a three-year limitation on how many times it could happen within three years.
Well, yeah, if they stole that many within a three-year period from the date...
They should be forever, because they just roll that over like a bank account. But I would really like to appreciate what's going on with Kern County standing up against California's soft-on-crime policies over the last five or 10 years. And I really appreciate you all looking out for us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jess. I see Mr. Darryl Terrell is making his way down to the podium. He's been a champion of this issue, not just here in Kern County, but all around the state. And I want to thank you for that. It is a serious matter. If you know people whose lives have been disrupted by this, you know how stressful, costly, and nightmarish it is. And to Jess's point, it's just really nice to see members of the community, Darryl, help their government, you know, think about these things in a new way, and to take action. It's really nice. So thank you for what you've done, and we're eager to hear from you.
Well, I want to thank Honorable Chair, and I want to thank Honorable Supervisor Couch, Ms. Maria, Ms. Isabel, and your staff, Honorable Supervisor Peters, and Honorable Supervisor Parley. My name is Darryl Terrell. I'm a resident in the city of Reno Valley in Riverside County. Let me begin with a story. I forgot. Mr. Josh, I forgot you. Thank you for the calls I've been doing. But not long ago, I met a single mom from Lamont. She works two jobs: daycare during the week, custodial at night. One morning, she walked out to take her daughter to school. She turned on her car and heard this loud grounding noise, sounded like a Harley Davidson. Her catalytic converter was stolen. She missed work. She had to borrow the money to fix it. In two weeks, and no one was held accountable. Multiplied that one mother by a hundredth of families across this county, that's the scale of this problem. State law AB 641 didn't do her any justice. It created a loophole to allow the thieves to steal up to eight catalytic converters and not be held accountable. Deputies can only charge them with a legal dismantling if they have nine or more and no permit. That's not justice. That's a loophole. And I've spoken to deputies throughout my travels, and they have told me personally, they have, they have come across people that have two, three, four catalytic converters, and they saw the tools, and they had nothing they could do about it, because they didn't meet the threshold of nine. So this ordinance does matters. So what this ordinance does, it gives your deputies the tools they need, regardless if it's one or nine, to bring these people to justice. And I just want to read something from, to you, from the staff analysis for this bill. And you're going to find this really interesting, is what the general is talking about. And it says, "Rather than making possessing catalytic converters a new crime, this bill takes an approach of expanding..." takes a approach of expanding the definition of an automotive dismantler, so that if someone has stolen," get it, here's his words, "stolen multiple converters, and it is discovered with them, they can be charged with operating as a dismantler without a license." This is why this ordinance is important, because in Sacramento, they don't want to hold nobody accountable. But here, you do. In my county, you do. In Fresno County, they do. In all 28 cities in my county, we do. So when you do pass this first reading, hopefully, got my fingers crossed, that we take this ordinance that you guys, when you adopt it, you go throughout the Central Valley, because I've, I've been to, like I said, I've been to Fresno. I led the charge up in Fresno, and I've been, Talarri, go to Talarri, go to these other counties, Inyo, San La Biscio, to your colleagues, and let's get together and let's hold these criminals accountable, because I can't do it alone. I just, I could just travel as far as I, I could. I can't go way up. I talked to Yoli County, Deputy District Attorney, he's interested in it, but I can't take a flight way up there. But if you guys down here decide to adopt it, let's start a movement, because Sacramento's not going to hold nobody accountable, but we can. We don't need no state legislature. We don't need the governor signing, because there's too many people out there who depend on their cars for their livelihoods, and this can really wreck a financial chaos in their, in their lives. So let's do something to, even the farmers, let's help them out, too. Thank you.
Darryl, thank you so much for your excellent advocacy and for how much you care. Thank you. And, and congrats on all your success around the state. I, I think it's wonderful. Any other public comment on this matter at this time? Okay, I'm going to close, bring back to the board. We do have a motion and a second. I don't see any supervisors punched in, so let's take a vote.
The motion is approved. Four eyes, one absent. Supervisor Flores.
Thank you very much. I would like to state for the record, Supervisor Flores's absence was known, we were aware of it, and he's out on business. So he will be back at our next board session. We're going to convene now to close session. We have a very lengthy agenda, and then we will be back at 2:00 P.M. for our afternoon session. Supervisor Couch, you have a motion to adjourn?
I do.
Adjourned.